Meeting to order with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Prayer from Mr. Cole?
Lord, we just thank you that we have this opportunity from freedom of this United States to be here to partner in this meeting. We thank you for all those that come here and the volunteer work that they've done in studying, organizing, trying to deal with the public, with public comment, and trying to work out the things. Lord, I grew up in this city and I'm so thankful that I've lived here all of my life and I continue to do that. We just ask that you help guide and direct this meeting, that it would be prosperous, that it would be gentle, kind, caring, thoughtful, looking out to the needs of others, not just ourselves, that we want to make this city a better place as we can, partner up with the city council and all that they do to help run the city. We join them and partner up in good fellowship. Amen.
Thank you. Move on to the roll call, but before I do that, I do have an announcement that Mr. Beach resigned this afternoon, so his name will not be on the roll call.
Mayor Williams?
Here.
Counselor Burke?
Here.
Counselor Ian Smith?
Here.
Counselor Kristen Smith?
Here.
Counselor Taylor?
Here.
Counselor Zimmerman?
Here.
Roll call is complete, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. I'll move on to welcome everyone here tonight and those who are online. I'm always glad to see faces attending the meetings. So, move on to approve the regular city council meeting sixteen fifty-six, July first, and sixteen fifty-seven of July fifteenth. And we don't have fifty-eight from August fifth. Does everyone get a chance to read those?
Make a motion. We approve minutes, council meetings sixteen fifty-six and sixteen fifty-seven.
Second.
Okay. Did everyone get a chance to read them? Are there any corrections or additions? Any public comments on those two sets of minutes? Mr. Orr?
Madam Mayor and Council, I'm D.C.R. I reside at eleven seventeen Nevada Avenue. I stand up and speak at most every meeting. I'm sat on that side of the table. I know what you guys are supposed to be doing, and I speak my piece on the regular basis. Public comments of these two meetings, I stood up and requested a spot on the agenda. It didn't show up in the minutes. That is tampering with the public record. It's illegal. There's a law against tampering with the public record. Now, I stand up here and I ask to be put on the agenda because everyone tells me you have to ask the mayor to get on the agenda. It does mention that, I recognize that that is false, that the mayor does not set the agenda. She arranges the agenda. I can't tell you everything you're doing wrong in three minutes. So, I need to get on the agenda so we can review your policy for putting people on the agenda. Madam Mayor, I am asking once again, this is my third time, I'm requesting that I be put on the agenda with an action item to vote on policy for getting put on the agenda. I will explain to you when I have more than three minutes why what you're doing is illegal, unethical, immoral, and wrong. You guys have locked people out of their constitutional rights. You are violating your oath of office, each and every one of you, by not dealing with this issue. Madam Mayor, you especially, we ought to appreciate your style. Please.
Any other public comments on the minutes? Any other public comments?
Madam Mayor, I do want to request that the minutes be changed.
You did not reflect that in your comments.
I would like to request that the minutes actually be changed to represent the substance of matters discussed because that's what the law says. You have to, the minutes have to contain the substance of matters discussed. And the substance of the matter each time I stood up was to request to be put on the agenda. Now, I think that's being hidden because the mayor knows what she's doing is illegal, unethical, and immoral. But it's also illegal to change the minutes to tamper with the public record.
So, does anyone want to make a correction to the minutes to reflect any of that?
I'll make a motion. We correct the minutes to reflect what Mr. D.C.R. was trying to say, that he wanted to be put on the agenda.
Does everyone else agree?
Yeah, I agree. I'm just not sure. I mean, I see it says it in the minutes about not being on the agenda.
Okay.
What exactly should be different?
So, you want to reflect that, correct the minutes to reflect what?
I don't know. What's the difference from what's in here to what?
Both sets of minutes say that he expressed frustration. He was informed he would not be on the agenda.
So, Mr. Orr was trying to say, was he requested to be put on the agenda and that's not in the minutes?
So, wants to say that. Okay, gotcha. I get it.
Okay. Is everyone in agreement?
Yes.
To correct it, to reflect that?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm not hearing from Mr. Zimmerman or?
It doesn't matter to me because I think it reflects just fine. It's just an opinion.
Ms. Smith?
I agree with Mr. Zimmerman.
Okay. The majority seems to reflect that they want that corrected, so I will ask you to listen to those tapes and see, correct that. Okay, so with the correction, all in favor of the motion to approve the minutes?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, moving on. Through announcements, the fire restrictions have been lifted at the recommendation of Steve Lauer, Fire Marshal. The budget hearing that we'd originally scheduled for tonight got, was moved to September third as part of the general meeting, and at six thirty on September third, we will have a meeting at the request of Mike Fraser on the CDBG grant request. So, he wants a public hearing at six thirty out front of the meeting so he can get back to Calispo.
Okay.
Committee reports. Mr. Sykes is on vacation this week. You already did the fire report or not?
I did, and I handed in the copy, the hard copy, to LeAnn tonight.
Okay, and there's no police report? Orness Committee?
Nothing for Orness, thank you.
Okay, water sewer?
Water sewer, nothing to report as of tonight.
Okay, zoning commission?
The zoning commission will be holding a meeting on September nine to review a zoning change request as well as an annex and settlement request.
Okay.
To council.
Okay.
September ninth, six o'clock here.
Cemetery and parks?
Nothing to report.
Bye, Nancy.
I do have a couple little announcements here, Madam Mayor, Council. I've got all the information to start our annual financial report to the auditor's office. They will get the next needs list to me when they need it so we can get the year in all done. And I've already received the list that they need for our next audit. Usually I don't see that until like January. So, I'm hoping. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. There's no wildlife, Board of Health hasn't met, and Tony Patricia is not here, so we will move on to public comments on non-agenda items. Anyone want to come and speak on non-agenda items that are within the jurisdiction of the council? Mr. Orr?
Madam Mayor and Council, I have stood up here for four years asking about the IP settlement, settlement that we have received over four million dollars out of in the past. I was part in negotiating that original settlement for the people of Libby. When that timed out, the contract was for ten years, that was timed out in June four years ago. The mayor decided that it was client attorney privileged information. She put it on the agenda for a while, nothing happened with it. She put it on old business for a while. We never got a report of what was going on. There was some funny stuff happened where the entire council actually voted to hire a trusted attorney, unanimously voted to hire a trusted attorney. Then Mayor Brent Teskey somehow circumvented that legal vote of the entire council, an unanimous vote of the council, and he kept the attorney that you have. And they have since hidden in client attorney privilege what's going on with that. We're now anywhere from one point two to one point five million dollars in rivers on that payment, and no one seems to know what's going on. I think you guys really need to tell people Libby what you've done with that IP settlement. Did you all take a piece of it? Thank you.
Madam Mayor, may I respond to that?
Sure.
Mr. Orr, after you left the last meeting, that IP negotiation were discussed and what the update on that was given? How we're happy to be, we're done here tonight to fill you in?
Is it in minutes?
Yeah, we don't have the current minutes yet, so I can go, I can't tell you.
I'll wait until minutes come out.
Actually, I will correct that he was not at the last meeting.
He wasn't at the last meeting.
Oh, isn't added at all?
Okay, I guess it was discussed at the end of the last meeting.
Any other public comments? Ms. Dinkins?
Karen Dinkins, twelve ten Dakota Avenue, also Igniter's Car member. Just wanted to say that the Igniter's Car show went off without a hitch over the weekend. We appreciate the street closure. The only one concerning thing that we did notice was that there was only one police, city police officer on duty. Usually it's all hands on deck. Usually we see everybody. So, that was a little concerning, but everything went well. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Any other public comments? Then we will move on to the agenda items. No old business, we'll move on to the new business. The first of which is the Rotary taking over the Department of Labor project with the city banners. And I did put together a draft resolution, but Janelle wanted to say something, so.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. My name is Janelle Kimble. I work for the Department of Labor Industry on the engagement team. I am here to clarify the Department of Labor Industry's end goal regarding the industry awareness banners, answer any of your questions, and to discuss solutions for the future of this project. Our intent for this project was to bring awareness of local opportunities to the community. Our end goal is for an organization to take over the banner project and continue promoting local awareness through the banners. I do apologize to the council and the community for any miscommunication regarding our intent of passing on the banner project to a local organization. And we are willing to work with the council and community on a solution to continue displaying banners to promote local awareness. One solution is the banners could be a soft handoff to an organization where the Department of Labor Industry will continue to assist in the project per the council's guidelines. So, if there are any questions regarding the banners themselves, the project, the handoff, I'd like to be able to clarify them if you're?
I guess one question I have is, you're talking about just the banners that you created?
No.
So, there's the banner frames, right, and then there's the industry awareness banners?
Exactly.
So, those could be put up at some future date?
The industry awareness banners?
Those banners?
Yes.
You don't have any other banners that you created?
No, no.
So, we have banner frames?
Yes.
Okay. So, that's what we're talking about utilizing for future banners, right?
For future banners. Our end goal was for an organization to take over the entire project and to continue promoting positive awareness of Libby. Not, doesn't have to be industry awareness banners. They could be tourist banners. They could be community banners. It could be whatever, you know, but it would be to continue promoting awareness of the community. For us starting the project, wouldn't it be Department of Labor? We had to go industry awareness. We had to show workforce. But the project itself can take on such a whole other meaning, you know, but it is a lot of labor to have it. It's a lot of work to get it done, but if you have the right organization to take it over, it can be very, I mean, the sky's the limit of what you could do with those banners downtown and, I don't know. I mean, maybe because of all the work, but when I was doing the nights, walking around, it's just, it looked so nice. You know, it just looked really nice having them up, and, you know, like I said, the Department of Labor Industry were willing to work with the organization, you know, to continue working with them on, with the banners per the guidelines of the council.
I should say that Rotary decided not to come and, to wait and see what we developed as a resolution and a policy before they, they would, they need to then take that back to their board before approval, before they move forward with this. Okay?
And I just wanted to clarify if there was any other questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I did put together a draft resolution. I know that Ms. Smith has also put together something but didn't get it to me in time to actually get it printed and out. So, I will read this version after I put on my glasses so I can actually see. "A resolution of the City of Libby, a resolution of the City Council of Libby, Montana, to allow Rotary Club of the Cooten Valley to oversee banners and seasonal decorations on the Mineral Avenue power poles between Lincoln Boulevard and First Street. Whereas Montana Department of Labor and Industry and the City of Libby desire to transfer the industry awareness campaign from the City of Libby to Rotary Club of the Cooten Valley, and whereas the City of Libby is willing to have the Rotary Club of Cooten Valley provide oversight for placing current and future banners and seasonal decorations in an attractive and timely manner, and whereas the City of Libby desires to ensure that future banners and decorations are in keeping with the community standards of the city, now therefore be it resolved that the City of Libby hereby grants oversight authority to the Rotary Club of the Cooten Valley and all current and future banners and seasonal decorations on Mineral Avenue subject to the following conditions. A, the city shall retain final authority for operations and expenditures, and all banners and decorations must be approved by the city prior to their purchase or creation, and banners and decorations may not be created or hung with the intent of providing direct commercial advertising or financial gain for any individual or entity, but only to the industrial awareness campaign as a whole, and banners and decorations must be kept in good condition." So, I would open the floor for discussion and?
Just something came to mind after listening, and the industry awareness, like, community awareness or something, like, it doesn't have to be industry, right?
Correct.
Yeah, so my suggestion was, because we're specifically talking about?
Do you want to read yours as an alternative?
Sure.
Okay.
There's just a couple of suggestive additions, but I also have some questions about the, their fours. The City of Libby hereby grants, I would suggest, not oversight authority, but management. We're granting management to the Rotary Club?
Oh, management, okay.
And that we would retain, because two A says retains final authority for operations. And then, I'm not sure why this is expenditures, if we're?
The intent was to make sure that if they were expecting the city to pay for something?
Well, I think that needs to be in the resolution, that the city, you know, any expenses that are requested by the city to have the authorization, right, or something like that?
So, where would you put it? Have you, exactly what are you saying?
I'm not sure because the way I read that, it sounds like we are going to incur expenses, but maybe, maybe I'm not.
Okay.
So, maybe it just needs to be broken out, like, the city shall retain file, final authority for? Yeah, I guess we just need to know, we need to understand what our role is because this says purchase also.
It would, I felt that it would better, if they were going to be purchasing new banners, that we knew about it before they did that purchase, in case there were something that this council didn't actually?
I agree. I just, is, are we, are we purchasing them jointly? Are we purchasing them? I mean, I, I have a lot of thoughts.
What I heard the last meeting was that the city wanted to have the final say on whatever went up on those poles. And that's what I tried to address.
And I'm certainly not opposed to, you know, partnering with an organization for new banners, you know, because that totally falls in line with our community development fund. That would be something that, that might not, I just, I don't know.
Okay, Hugh?
Well, one question I've got here referring to the banners and seasonal decorations on the line. Where does that put our rees?
They would be responsible?
I know, but they're, that's just responsible for putting them up. So, I mean, is that mean we so and so can't put their decoration on the pole because he keeps running the decoration on the pole? What does that do to that?
Does the Manninghans do that currently or not anymore?
No, it was really kind of an ad hoc project that a date was selected to get them up in late November. Sam would send out a note, an email. Manninghans would provide a truck, and Labor, we provided a truck, I think a truck and person, their story at the Western News. The Montana Sky or Flathead, I think it was Montana Sky mostly would show up with their lift, and everybody cooperated to get them up. And then there was a date, this last year, they didn't get down until the end of February because that wall got dropped, but then in mid-January, they would come down. And that's kind of been the ad hoc way of getting them done the last few years, especially since Mark left. Manninghans?
So, okay, so where are the decorations going to be? Are we still housing that?
No, they're still at the Western News. They're being started. The last few years, they've been started in the basement of the Western News. They were the only people?
Is Rotary willing to put those up?
That was my understanding. They wanted to be in charge of whatever went up and down on the poles.
So, we're, are some worried that if we decide in future time to do our own banner system, that we would be conflicting with their banners instead of, I'm just, there's so much here that I'm wondering why are we putting ourselves in the middle where we don't have to be really?
Well, technically, the frames belong to the city. Is that correct? The frames are funded by LoR?
Yes, due to LoR and the way the funding system went, I needed a champion to cover the funding, and the city agreed to be the champion. So, all the banners and all the frames belong to the City of Libby.
They actually do, okay.
And so do the light poles, and so do the public records.
Light poles don't, those are Flathead electric?
Okay, you were on Zoom last, and I don't, I think you missed part of the conversation?
Okay.
From the way you're kind of questioning, I think you didn't hear all of it? Or maybe I'm misheard again. What's, what did you hear?
About what?
That Rotary's intent, what they stated last meeting.
Well, just that they would take it over and produce the banners and take care of everything, basically. That's what I understood.
I heard them want to be responsible for everything that went up and down on the poles.
I didn't hear that part.
Yeah, I don't remember the poles part. I just remember the banners.
So, yeah, I think we need clarification. Are they, are they willing to take over the decorations? Because that is, that's very much a seasonal thing, and I think the city absolutely has that final authority over the banners that come up. A screening?
And why?
It portrays, it portrays the city's interests and?
Yes, but I don't think that, I wouldn't, I wouldn't assume that the Rotary would be putting up anything that wouldn't be community orientated, so I mean, I, I, I'm just, I just think we're, we have somebody that wants to take this over and run with it, and I feel like we're holding back on the reins, and we're trying to keep our fingers in it, and we really don't maybe need to, but that's just my feeling.
So, the city has a long track record of just sort of agreements that don't have any documentation associated with it, and then there's no follow-through when stuff goes awry. And all, all my intent was to get something down so that the parties involved know what their roles are, know what their responsibilities are and obligations, and no one's going ten years down the road.
Well, like, like right now, Rotary, I think, would be fine to just take it, but in ten or twenty years, who's going to be running Rotary?
Who's going to be running council?
Who's going to be on the council? But I agree.
I mean, it all sounds good, right? Just let it do it, but?
No, I agree with you. If it's not written down, it never happened.
Or it doesn't happen in a?
Couldn't, couldn't we have more of a letter of intent that everybody signs instead of a resolution? Or maybe we have to because of the city.
It just made sense to me to have a resolution that defined our expectations. Because then we would go back. I'm sorry.
We're giving away city properties. I'd say we need a resolution, I would think.
The frames belong to the city. The banners belong to the city.
The light, the light poles are questionable, but I mean, that's?
But at this point, we aren't giving anything away.
Well, if nothing's written down, if nothing is said, the city retains ownership of the banners, right? They belong to us, and we will let them reutilize the banners, but we need to, we just want to, yeah, we just want to have some say in how it goes up. It doesn't seem that.
I agree.
So, the decorations are in question? The city, you're in agreement, you won't find the authority?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I had hoped to get this draft ready tonight. I can see that we're not necessarily there yet. So, I will, unless you have more comment to make, I'll open it for public comment, and then we can postpone and get, Kristen can send out her draft, and then we can compare the two and see which, how direction we want to go, okay? So, any public comments on the resolution twenty thirty-six regarding Rotary taking over the banner and decorations for the city, for the power poles? Mr. Orr?
D.C.R., eleven seventeen Nevada Avenue. I've spent a lot of time with Rotary Club. I am actually a Paul Harris Fellow, which means I made an extra commitment to Rotary Club beyond what was normally required, and that is a lifetime honorarium. Rotary Club is a very dynamic organization whose sole focus is betterment, betterment to community, betterment to the nation, betterment to the world. They're a big organization. They have a rich history, a long history. You can't go wrong partnering up with Rotary Club. Either you give them the ball and let them run with it.
Any other public comments regarding? Any other public comments regarding the question of the banners and Rotary Club?
I just have one question. If the Rotary Club does not agree to take over the project, as you know, you own the frames and you own the banners, what do you foresee the future of that project? Because as of November, the day after Thanksgiving, when the wreaths usually go up and those banners come down. If no organization takes it over to run with it to continue promoting community awareness, what's your future? What do you see with that project?
Thank you.
Well, I, I guess I would encourage the mayor to just talk directly with the Rotary and before we go back and forth, back and forth, and just find out what they're willing to, what, what they really want to do. Because the came to a meeting, we didn't have all the information before they came. Right, and just.
Okay, any other public comments regarding Rotary Club and the banners? Any other public comment? Then I'll bring the discussion back here, so I guess we need some more information. So we'll postpone this question and resolution to September 3rd, okay? And that brings us to the Local Study Commission Resolution regarding the election, but it says proclamation, but it's really affirmation and the position appointments. I'll read the resolution and then we can, at the time, it's been kind of a question, exactly what is expected. So a resolution, sorry. A resolution of the City Council of Libby, Montana to cancel the Local Government Study Commission election from the ballot and to appoint electors of the City of Libby. Whereas 7 HB 447 passed by the 2017 legislature, Chapter 174, laws 2017, authorizes, authorizes a municipality to cancel an election by resolution after notification by the election administrator if the number of candidates filling, filing for election is equal to or less than the number of persons to be filled. And whereas by email dated August 13th, 2024, the City of Libby received notification from the Lincoln County Election Administrator that there was only one filing for three positions of the City of Libby Local Government Study Commission. Whereas per 131403, Sections 5 and 6, if an election is canceled and there are no regular or declared writing candidates for a position, the governing body of the local government shall fill the position by appointment. The term of an appointed member must be the same as if the member were elected. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Libby hereby calls for the Local Studies, Government Study Commission election to be canceled if three or fewer candidates file before 5:00 PM on September 3rd, 2024. And if there are three or fewer candidates, the City of Libby will elect by acclamation the filed candidates and appoint from the electors of the City of Libby candidates for the remaining vacant positions. You received the email that, that was sent out by the election administrator that didn't have a whole lot of information on it. She would actually like for us to cancel the election before the 21st because that's her deadline for ordering ballots. But the sep, writing candidates have until September 3rd to file as a writing candidate. And I never got a satisfactory answer of how to mesh those two together. Okay? So, discussion, and I did also send out Ashley Kent's summary because they've been getting a lot of questions and some cities have actually already canceled their elections.
So we would just put out a call for that, after September 3rd?
Yes, but the local government center is saying that because of training and cetera and the requirement for them to meet, that it shouldn't be done until after the November election.
Gotcha.
Because then they would, they would be meeting with no training. That was in Ashley's email. So they're saying that we don't actually have to appoint until November. I know, this is just to get, since we don't have enough candidates filing, this would just cancel the election and bring the process into the council, which we would then be appointing to fill those positions in a process that I see somewhat like a filling of vacancy on the commission or a board.
So are we, are we supposed to approve this resolution?
Yes, and if you would prefer to change the date to August 21st, that would be your decision as well. That would clarify moving forward with the acclamation and appointments. I'm a little queasy about short cutting that.
No, statutorily, if they have until September 3rd. So that should be.
Okay.
Then I make the most of that we adopt resolution 2035.
Second. Any other comment before I open it for public comment? Any public comments on Resolution 2035? Mr. Or.
People on this side of the table don't have the information that you have on that side of the table. You have one candidate who filed, you have never mentioned a name. They are going to be appointed by acclamation, is that what I understand? You're not going to answer because you don't answer questions. So you're not going to mention who that is, you're not going to talk about how you are going to appoint these new candidates. Are you going to put out applications and solicit new candidates? So I did not file for this because I can't get appointed to any kind of position by the city council. I've been here for 25 years and I've watched Brian Zimmerman be the only councilperson elected. Everyone else sitting on that side of the table was appointed, yes, initially appointed.
No, Sarah?
Yep.
No, I was not.
Who was, you weren't?
No, I was not. I was elected.
Boy, that's.
So was Mr. St.
So was me.
Anyway.
Yeah, yeah, you were elected. The appointments that they made, Angel Ford comes to mind. You know, you made some, some poor choices in your appointments. I hope that this time you guys will pay attention because this is something that the voters have mandated to you, that you put together this commission and that this commission gives you guys some ideas of what you're doing wrong. One of the things you're doing wrong is allowing the mayor to handle all the agendas. The mayor does not have the authority to set the agenda. She has the authority to arrange the agenda. It's a legislative agenda, you are legislators. When you guys know that little about your jobs, it, you just embarrass the entire community. So let's see you guys really do your jobs here, appoint some people like the police commission. Now that was, that was a success story. And I don't remember if I filed for that or not, I believe I did. But they're doing great things. You guys have a chance here to put together a commission that will actually change the landscape here. Give the people a voice, give the people their constitutional civil rights back. Good luck with that.
Any other public comments regarding the Study Commission Resolution? Any other public comments? Then I'm all in favor of the resolution to pass Resolution 2035?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, we will get that to the election administrator tomorrow or Wednesday. Brings us to all claims received to date, did everyone get a chance to read, look at the claims?
Make a motion, we approve all claims received to date.
Second. Okay, anybody have any questions? Any public comments regarding the claims? Public comment regarding the claims? Okay, public comments? Okay, all in favor, approve of claims received today?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, claims are approved. Brings us to business license applications received to date. Cultured Pearl, who's moving the yarn shop from the inside the printing press to its location in the back of the quilt store, and LAS Masonry.
Make a motion, we approve all business license applications received today.
Second.
Okay, any comments or questions on? Any public comment regarding those business applications? Public comment regarding the applications? Okay, last call, public comments? Then all in favor of the motion to approve the business license?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, those two business licenses are approved. Brings us to unfinished business with the Libby Development Fund policy and application process. And I again have not, that was not in my radar this past two weeks because of other things. So does anyone have any comment or has done, have you done any work in, for what you want to do?
I have not done anything new.
Okay, then I think I'll revert back to the last seven minutes that had it mentioned, which was the July 15th. I'll revert back to what that says and try to move forward from there. Okay? General comments from the council?
Yes, I would like to say that, you know, as far as the whole local government study, you know, appointment thing, people, I'm asking you to do your civic duty, you know, I'm up here, I did, I did my civic duty, put the application in. I want to see a bunch of applications, you know, I don't want to see this thing fail. So I'm asking you to put your applications in and do your civic duty.
Any other comments? Then I will revert back to what I said at the beginning of the meeting, of the resignation of Mr. Beach. We will be, per our council policies and procedures, we'll be advertising that and looking at doing an appointment in the next 30, 30 days. Okay? Any other comments? Then I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting is adjourned.